Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and start our June 11th Planning Commission meeting. And if everybody would join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we'll go ahead and do roll call, Kathy?
Mr. Severson?
Present.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Denial?
Here. Okay, well, go ahead and have our report from the Planning Director, EJ.
Good morning. I'm EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. If you've seen your agenda, you'll see that there's a new section on there under called Consent Items. It's maybe something you were familiar with at one time. I think there was a time when we had a consent agenda on the Planning Commission. It's been a long time. I don't know if anybody on this commission ever had that. And what we're trying to do is have this place for more routine items that necessarily don't need a full report and a full presentation like we normally do, such as for extensions of times, maybe applications that come before you that are continued to a specific date, but then they withdraw their appeal. Just something kind of to speed up the process so you don't have to go through a whole presentation, but yet you can still take action on projects. We have one of those today, and that is an extension of time, and that's on the consent agenda. We'll still be preparing reports, staff reports for those, so you'll have all the information on the item. Then it will be up to the Chair to determine whether there's anybody on the commission or in the audience that wants to pull those items off the agenda, and then, you know, you could decide to do that. Let's see, what else can I tell you?
Just say-
Yeah.
One question on that. I see it's actually listed as the last item, and isn't it usually on the consent items? Wouldn't we put it in the front? And then that way, if anybody in the audience or any commissioners would say, "Okay, pull it," then it could still go on at the end of the-
Right, and that's something we can decide to do here. So, since they aren't timed items, there's going to be, you know, several items on the consent agenda. We'll probably always list them at the end of the agenda, but what we could do is add at the beginning of the agenda just kind of a consent-
After public comment.
Yeah, after public comment, consent items, and then you can take it up there, ask if anybody in the audience or any of the other commissioners want to pull an item off the agenda, and then you can handle them before we get into the timed items.
Yeah.
That's probably my preference. We didn't note that on the agenda this time, but if that's something the commission is favorable to doing, then we should look at doing that. So I guess the big thing to remember is, you know, to take the consent agenda up, make sure you ask if there's anybody in the audience or any commissioners, see if they do want to pull anything off. If they do, of course, we'll hear that item right then and there. Otherwise, you know, someone can make a motion to take action on that agenda. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, other business, upcoming Planning Commission items or hearings, June 25th, we're going to take another trip to Tahoe. We thought we were going to have a lot of time up there to do other things, maybe make some site visits. I don't think that's going to be the case now. What's on the agenda is the draft EIR hearing for the Squaw Valley specific plan. I imagine that will take a little bit of time, just from staff standpoint, to, you know, present that project to you. We also have an appeal of an administrative approval for a cellular facility that's located at the Pepper Tree Inn in Tahoe City. There's a subdivision modification for the Met CAFs, that's in the Alpine Meadows area. And then we have an extension of time for the Cabin Creek biomass project, and that would be, that would probably be a consent agenda item there. The next meeting, Kathy, is July 9th. I believe it's July 9th, and right now, we don't have anything on that particular agenda, so we'll let you know if we're going to hold that or not. The Board of Supervisors, they're meeting next week, next Tuesday. A couple of projects that you have acted on will be going. Morgan Knoll subdivision will be one of them, and then, excuse me, ponds, pavilion, and lofts. And then we'll also be given an update on the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, which Sherri Conway will be doing. So that's all I have right now. If there's any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, we can get going.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to comment on anything other than what's on the agenda today, now is your chance. Seeing that, go ahead and move on to our first item, the Villa Winery Community Center. And Sherri, I guess you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Glad the rain stopped, if I can operate this. Before you this morning is a modification of a minor use permit for the Wise Villa Winery Community Center. Back in 2012, your commission did vote unanimously to consider a minor use permit approval for the Wise Villa Winery, located, as you see here, just on Wise Road in Lincoln area. At that time, a minor use, I'm sorry, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and approved pursuant to SEQA. We're here today because at that time in December of 2012, your commission, while voting unanimously to approve this project, added a condition of approval, number 42, and I'll read that for you. This minor use permit is valid for two years and shall expire on March 12th, 2015 unless approval of a modification of this permit is granted by the Planning Commission prior to the expiration date. So by way of background, this is an overview of the facility as it is today. Actually, it's a little bit more. You'll see here, my pointer, I've got no pointer. The residence is about here, tasting room area and parking are- Wow!
Yeah, much better.
Jeez. I am still clearly challenged. Tasting room, the residence is here, parking, which has been more fully developed since this aerial was taken, is here, tasting room and facility is in that area of the site. Again, by way of background, kind of dating way back, Agricultural Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval in December of that same year. The Lincoln MAC also recommended approval of the project. And then before your commission in December, you took action to approve the minor use permit for two years. And again, that was condition number 42, and we're here today because that time has now come. The planning, the county did receive a third-party appeal from a consortium of groups in December of that year. On to March of 2013, the Board of Supervisors denied that third-party appeal and reaffirmed that your Planning Commission's approval of this project, the minor use permit and the mitigated neg deck. So, most of you may, I think we're here, at the time maybe one of you was not, so we're not starting from scratch. Wanted to make, before we actually get to the recommendation, I want to go back to the overview. So consistent with the Planning Commission's modification of number 42, condition number 42, staff did review the community center, event center, as it's operating today, and compared it to the conditions of approval that your commission approved. So we convened the Development Review Committee, the DRC, and reviewed all of the conditions that were imposed at that time, and through the process of conducting the review, staff determined that all the conditions have been met, all the required permits for this project have been issued, the building permit process has been completed, and the applicant has been operating well within the parameters of the approved project. In addition, staff consulted with the Code Enforcement Division of our county for information on any complaints that may have been made within the last 24 months regarding the Wise Villa Winery and Community Center. Aside from one complaint that was registered regarding an unpermitted A-frame sign, which was subsequently removed, there were no other complaints that had been lodged. And finally, our staff has had no complaints registered to our, in our own complaint hotline. So as I mentioned, staff has reviewed the community center, the winery as it's been operating for this past two years, and found that the winery is in full compliance with the original conditions of approval. And so the recommendation before you today is that you approve, let's see, pardon me, approve the, determine that the previously adopted mitigated neg deck remains adequate and approve the minor use permit modification to remove condition number 42, to allow for the continued use of the winery. Essentially, typically, a use permit does run with the land, and so we're here today to recommend that the commission make the determination that the use permit be allowed to continue to run with the land, providing he remains in compliance with the conditions of approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
This is just informational type question, and this is in the farm zone.
Correct.
And so basically, what we have is a winery and a tasting room, and also a facility that provides food for, under a community center, you'd think for groups, but also they have walk-in traffic that comes in and buys, I'm sure, wine and food together. And so at any rate, I guess one of the questions I'm sure is going to come up is, in terms of the farm zone and restaurants, and how does this facility and proposal, I guess, compare to the farm zone or a restaurant? Or what's the difference, I guess?
From the very onset of the project, the applicant's intention was to educate his patrons on wine pairings, and that is his intent and his goal as he remains today. So the food offerings are subordinate to the wine tasting that he provides at the facility. Rather than the food being the dominant activity, it's the wine is the dominant activity, food is subordinate to that activity, with the educational component always being a priority there.
So I guess as long as, what you're saying, as long as the wine is the dominant factor, as, you know, if the permit goes on, then the conditions would require that. So if all of a sudden the food becomes a predominant factor, then it'd be outside of the-
Correct. It would be outside of the original approved conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Sherri.
Thanks, Ken.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Larry Farina, I'm representing Dr. Grover Lee and the Wise Villa Winery for the minor use permit review before you today. On behalf of Dr. Lee, I would like to thank Placer County Planning Staff for their diligent work and cooperative attitude in bringing this matter before you. It's been a pleasure to work with them. Dr. Lee would also like to say thank you to this commission for their decision to allow him to quite literally live out his dream of not only producing award-winning wines in Placer County, but allowing him to share those wines in a unique manner by educating people in the proper pairing of fine wine and fine food. As staff has stated, this commission issued a minor use permit in December of 2012 for the Wise Villa Winery Community Center. That decision was appealed by a third-party to the Board of Supervisors, and that appeal was heard in March of 2013. I wanted to share a few comments made by the supervisors in their final discussion prior to their voting. Supervisor Yuler commented, "What we have here is an applicant that has come forward with a well-planned, well-thought-out business case, having demonstrated proper stewardship for the land, having demonstrated the willingness to embrace the local agricultural community that we are trying to support, trying to advance, and is simply saying, 'I'm willing to make this investment.'" He went on to say, "I look forward to, hopefully, this board sending a message that we do honor agriculture in this community, and we are going to do what we can to support your endeavors." Supervisor Weigant, when commenting on the community center ordinance passed in 1995, stated, "In my view, this application is something that the board could have only dreamed of back in 1995." And finally, Supervisor Holmes, very simply stated, "Mr. Lee's project is visionary." The supervisors then went on to vote unanimously to deny the appeal and uphold your decision to issue Dr. Lee and the Wise Villa Winery a minor use permit for the community center and allowing him to carry out that vision. We are not here today to discuss the validity of the Wise Villa Winery Community Center permit. It has been issued. We are not here to reconsider the operational conditions of the permit as it has been issued. We are here because of condition 42, to review whether the Wise Villa Winery Community Center has operated in a manner consistent with the conditions of the minor use permit as it was issued. At the risk of being redundant, in your staff report, you will read, and I quote, "The applicant has been operating within the parameters of the approved project." And again, "The winery is operating in full compliance with all conditions of approval for the minor use permit. Dr. Lee and the Wise Villa Winery agree completely with the staff's conclusions and have come before you today to attest to the fact that the Wise Villa Winery Community Center has operated for the past two years in a manner consistent with the conditions of the minor use permit that your commission approved in 2012. We're requesting that this commission, in agreement with the staff findings, take the action to approve the minor use permit modification to remove the condition of approval 42, to allow for the continued use of the Wise Villa Winery Community Center." We want to thank you for your time in taking this action up, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm kind of curious that, obviously, there was an issue that was brought up, and it was about a sign that was put out on Wise Road that was promoting a bistro when really the primary purpose of this facility is to promote the wine. It suggests an underlying desire by the owner to really promote the restaurant as well, and while he's removed it, I just want to make sure that he doesn't feel that he still has sort of an open door to run a quasi-restaurant in it, right in the heart of agricultural community.
The issue about the restaurant has come up repeatedly, and as Sherri stated, and I'll try and maybe repeat without using the same words, Dr. Lee's objective in his permit is specifically to provide wine and food pairing with an educational element. Everything that happens at his quote-unquote "bistro," which is just a term for what he calls the place, has to do with wine and food pairing. If you go there, you'll see the menus all have wines paired with every item on the menu. The staff is trained to instruct you as to why those wines are paired, what the components are, et cetera. When Dr. Lee allows events, which are specific events, such as Realtors Association dinners, the condition of any of those events is that he is allowed to speak to them and educate them in wine and food pairing. I actually spoke to someone who attended one of those events and was amazed at the things they learned. They went to an event to have dinner, to do whatever it was they were doing, they came away learning about wine and food and how they go together and why. That's Dr. Lee's objective, that's his goal, that's been his vision since the time he started this. So as Sherri said, the restaurant is secondary to the fact that he wants to educate people, and he makes these award-winning wines that he is obviously in the market to sell. And by educating people in how these wines work with the food, then he has a better market to sell the wines to, and that is generally and often the case.
Then you're saying that as a non-event situation, that if people come in and want something to eat, that they do it with wine? Is there ever a case where somebody comes in and they eat and they don't drink wine?
I honestly can't say. I don't know.
All right.
You know, I would assume that may happen, but I will have to say that I had the experience of dining there last week, and I can say that nobody forced me to drink wine, but if you're going to go to a winery and have a meal that has this opportunity, I don't know why you wouldn't, in all honesty. Dr. Lee never promotes his winery as a destination restaurant. It is a winery.
Well, pardon me, but that sign out in front that said "bistro" for a short period of time does sound to me was promoting it, so.
Understandable.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Larry. Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Jasper. I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition and the Sierra Club. When the Wine, Wise Villa Winery Community Center permit was approved, the compliance condition was the permit would not be removed if there were non-conforming uses or complaints. We submit there have been both. We believe Wine, Wise Villa is operating as a restaurant primarily. It is a winery, agreed, but if you look at their website, it's dinner and music. There is nothing in there about wine tasting or education on the year-long events. And therefore, operating as a restaurant, it's in violation of Placer County zoning that prohibits restaurants in farm zones. A community center is a venue that's rented and used for a specific function, as was just mentioned, for like an association to use it. If Wise Villa is allowed to continue operations as a de facto restaurant, it becomes a model for non-compliance. It exacerbates code enforcement problems and makes a mockery of the county's general plan, our constitution for compatible and orderly land uses. Wise Villa's community center permit, which has expired, allowed food to be served during a limited number of agreed dinner events, but that's the key, with the stipulation that all events would be connected to ag promotion and/or education. The stretch here is that Wise Villa is classifying sales of individual dinners as, to the public, as the event. Instead of events where Wise Villa would be reserved or booked by specific groups as an event venue, fundraisers, celebrations, et cetera, lunch and dinners are advertised to the public. Reservations are accepted from anyone, just like a restaurant. These are not and cannot be construed as events. Having a commercial kitchen approved by the Health Department is not a license or land use permit for a restaurant. Wise Villa is operating as a de facto restaurant in violation of the county code and MUP, and continuance of this permit was based on compliance, which is not there. So, we would ask that you urge, we urge you to not renew the permit and order Wise Villa to cease and desist community center restaurant operations as well as unpermitted winery events. Instead, they can obtain a winery ARP or a county temporary outdoor events permit or an agricultural event center permit. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Carol Rubin. I'm from Newcastle. I just want to echo everything that Ms. Jasper has said. It looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it's a restaurant, they advertise on Groupon and on the web and things like that. When this permit was originally given, it was given explicitly that meals in the kitchen were to be held with defined events. Advertising for people to walk in off the street is not an event. As Ms. Jasper has said, this sets a terrible precedent, particularly at this time when you're considering the winery ordinance, and I'd ask that this body direct that Dr. Lee cease his restaurant activities at Wise Villa Winery. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Good morning. My name is Eileen Wilkins, and I'm the most directly impacted by Wise Villa Winery. I am the neighbor closest to Dr. Grover Lee's restaurant. I came before your Planning Commission to discuss at the beginning of the initial permit use, some of the issues that were in discrepancy with the minor declaration report. Many of these have been violated. First of all, it was proposed that the minor use permit would have Wednesday through Sunday operation. That operation is non-existent. It is daily. Wine tasting is daily from 11 to 5, not Wednesday through Sunday, which was the original proposal all along. Amplified music, as stated in the negative declaration report, is restricted to inside the tasting room. Well, that has never been more violated than last spring, when this is what I heard from my yard. This is what I have to live with. I moved to the country to live in a quiet agricultural atmosphere, and this is what I have to listen to. This is not the only community event that is being planned. We have a luau to look forward to. I'm really excited about that, to be able to sit in my front yard and listen to the luau. Dr. Lee has a passion for wineries. I am very happy about that. I have a passion to live in an agricultural environment, and my rights as a private citizen have been violated because of Dr. Lee's passion. I don't know why that trumps my ability to have a quiet lifestyle. You indicate that you have had no reports of violations of his permit. That is not true. I sent a letter to the Planning Commission and copied Supervisor Weigant. Did I get a reply from any of you? No. He was in direct violation.
Excuse me, just one minute, just for clarification.
Yes.
Have you contacted Code Enforcement in any of these, you know, sound violations with that? Have you contacted or just written a letter?
I've written a letter.
But you haven't, anytime that they were playing the music, you haven't-
No, it was at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night.
But you haven't called in-
No.
-to the number and filed any-
No, I should have that on my refrigerator. I apologize, but I did not. You know, I did what I felt was right, was writing a letter to the Planning Commission and Supervisor Weigant. No one acknowledged that letter, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Not one individual.
I don't know about that part.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that anytime it's Code Enforcement and I've heard from you and prior people that there's all these violations, but nobody has stated that we have contacted Code Enforcement either during or after to file a complaint.
Can you ask, please, the Planning Commission and Supervisor Weigant why I didn't get acknowledged in my letter?
I can ask staff, but I didn't-
Right. So, because the avenue wasn't reported through Code Enforcement, does not negate the fact that the event happened and the violation occurred, and it was documented in a letter. So I think that the documentation in a formal letter to the Planning Commissioner and to my representative should be validation enough that this is just one of many events that have been violated. Over the course of the weekend, you know, in the negative declaration report, it also states that activities will be confined to the tasting room and possibly just the walkways in front of the tasting room. That is not the case. Last summer, there were pop tents put up all over the winery, and the party was outside. Now, I can appreciate the fact that people want to enjoy the outdoors, but there were hundreds of people out at that winery, outside, in tents, drinking wine and enjoying the outdoors, but that does have a totally negative impact on the direct neighbors in the area. And make no mistake, that is a bistro and a restaurant, and it is advertised heavily as a restaurant. It is a destination to be a restaurant. It is not simple food pairing. Don't, don't take that, a food pairing to go with wine. He would not have built a restaurant for that. And Dr. Lee assured me personally that that music would stay inside the winery. Well, he's not a man of his word. How have you been- How have you been monitoring and measuring these events? You haven't. And it's been incumbent upon me to be out there looking at the hundreds of cars, weekend after weekend, at his winery. And that is my view, out my front door. And I cannot understand how that trumps the direct neighbors' lifestyles. This threshold has already been violated. So, Dr. Lee's promises of first being a part-time winery have been violated. That morphed from the first application to the negative declaration report. That morphed. Oh, now we're open seven days a week. And then music, light jazz and acoustic music. Did that sound like light jazz and acoustic music to you? I don't think that you'd want to be sitting in your living rooms listening to that all the time. I didn't ask for this. I lived at that property before he bought it. Now, my property is devalued because of what Dr. Lee's following his passion. So, I think that that needs to be considered as well. There's no acoustic music coming when you hear that kind of thing. And then the luau planned, and there's about three or four other events. That's not taking place inside the winery. And it's not taking place as he promised. So, he is not a man of his word. There was stated in the negative declaration report that the project proposes that there'll be two larger events per month, 51 to 100 people. Come out every weekend and see over 100 people there Saturday and Sunday, not to mention the events that are going to be going on all summer once again. This is not what the declaration report indicated, and it's not what his original application for the minor use permit. So, I think that we cannot allow this to be a permanent circumstance. And just because I didn't happen to call the code enforcement does not negate the fact that this issue happened, and it goes on all the time. And it shouldn't be incumbent upon me as a neighbor who has lived there before he moved there to document all of those instances. He's not complying with it. And it's not my job to be code enforcement for the county or the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Grover Lee, owner of Wise Villa Winery. And I guess I couldn't just sit there and hear a bunch of lies from a neighbor. We're open Wednesday through Sunday. We're not open on Monday or Tuesday for anyone. Just our own staff is there. I have records of every single event I've ever had. I can tell you exactly how many people are there. All of our events are, the largest events we've had are, I think, 70-something people, although I am permitted to have up to 100. When people come to my establishment, we talk and we make sure that wine is highlighted on everything that we do. We have a, we had a staff meeting last night that we train every month on the proper approach that we take on when we're talking about food and wine. And I've done an extensive amount of education to each one of the people that work there, including the busboys, everyone, so that they know the proper etiquette. And when we talk about our wines, we talk about the regions of the world. And we say that when you come to the winery, we want you to feel like you've been transformed on a vacation to Europe, and maybe we'll start out in Italy and talk about San Javese, and then we'll point to our menu, which has a map of the world, and it shows both continents. And we talk about our wines that are in Argentina, and if you're going to have this particular food, that's what they, this would be a perfect wine, and that Argentine wine is really a wine that started in Spain. And it is really an education when you come and start. And that's the kind of education that I'm giving to each person that, when you come and do a wine tasting, we're going to talk, we're going to take you all over the world, and you're going to know a lot more about wine and why our wines are much lower in alcohol than almost all wines in California, because our wines are made very specifically to pair with food. And that is not a normal situation in California. I mean, we do some very specific things. I don't, I mean, I'm not just making wine just to make wine, to sell wine. We've had seven best-of-class wines. I don't know if you know what that means, but that's just last year, State Fair and San Francisco Chronicle, the two largest wine competitions in the world. That's kind of a big deal in the wine industry. There's not too many wineries that could say that. I received a call yesterday, I guess I really can't say this because you said not to say it, from the judge at the California State Fair, and asked me to reserve a specific day in about a week because I'm getting an award at the state capitol. A couple of months ago, I was asked to go to the state capitol for another award. I'm not doing this just, I hope you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
I have a question. One question. If I were to leave this commission meeting at 12 o'clock and drive out to the winery, can I get lunch?
Of course you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and we'll talk to you about the wines that you can get with your lunch.
If I just went out myself, I would get lunch.
Well, you're coming to a winery.
Well, I asked you one specific question, and you said yes, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't, why don't you ask me, how many people come for lunch and not get wine?
That wasn't my question.
I guess I can't turn you away, but I can tell you that the number of people that come to my establishment and not have wine, I can probably count on one hand. I don't know why someone would come to a winery that we talk about wine and food and not have wine. It's just, I guess it can happen. It probably has happened, but it doesn't happen.
No, I, when I say lunch, I would probably have a glass of wine because I like wine. But would you serve me lunch with wine if I came to the winery today at 12?
I would serve, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Was there another question that?
Well, I guess, following up on that question, did you start to say that if somebody came up, if I went there at noon and said, hey, I want lunch and stuff, are you going to give me like a wine, you know, type education? Or are you just going to say, what would you like?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Okay, I guess the question is, with your staff, would you, in talking with me and with whatever's on the menu, say, okay, this is what wine should go with it?
Yeah, well, there's different levels of staff education, but whatever wine you did get, you would get an education with that wine.
But if I didn't order any wine, if I just said I came in for lunch, and I said I didn't want any wine or anything, what would you, what would you do?
Okay, again, I guess you have to look at, what is the purpose of having the food in the first place? The food is a draw, so that people will come, and you can sell wine, which is agricultural product, end product, which is wine. I guess you can get all kinds of philosophical questions about the food and the wine, but the purpose is to have food available so that when that wine and food does go together, and the idea of Americans having wine and food is still a relatively new thing. I mean, when you look at the European continent, it's been thousands of years, okay? We're still in a cocktail mode in the United States. It's slowly changing. And if we have more people that realize the value of wine and why you might want wine with food, I can't imagine, I have so much to say about this, I just can't imagine going to 20 wineries and not having any food. I can't, the idea of not having food bothers me so much that the opportunity to have food and slow down, if you're going to have a wine tasting, please have some food. And slow down and don't try to just see how many wineries you can go to. Slow down, have some food with your wine, and if you have a lower alcohol wine, that might be even better, which all of our wines are in the 13%, which is very low for California wines, all right? So, my whole goal, I'm not in the restaurant business. I have food, and I like to have food with my wine, and the whole idea of having that, that opportunity to talk about that, I'm educating more and more people. I have never had hundreds of cars and hundreds of people ever in the last two years, ever, whoever. Did you hear that?
I've heard that.
Okay.
Okay, wait.
We have documents, we have documents. Of all, every single thing that we do, we have documents. I'll be glad to show you those documents if you need those. We have exact numbers.
Okay, one more question for me, and then I have another commissioner that would like to address you. If you, with, how many neighbors abut your property?
Really, just one. We have, well, no, we have one, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, I think six, seven, eight. Well, not a buts, one across the street, I think about seven or eight.
I noticed the picture with the residential and all. Have you gotten calls from any of the neighbors?
No, no.
So, nobody's contacted you directly?
No, and I tried my very best to make sure that the noise, I don't know what music she was playing. I don't know if she got that off her radio or whatever she did, but I have.
Please, no comments.
I try my very best not to have any outside music at all. We have a courtyard, and most of our music is pretty soft melodic stuff. If the only thing she has is one time a year ago, I'm sorry about that. I don't know what that was, but our music is pretty, if anyone has ever been there, you know what kind of music I play.
Oh, okay, because you answered my question. No complaints from any of the neighbors?
No, no, we haven't.
Okay, Rich, I know you had a.
Okay, it was mentioned that you have advertisements.
Pardon?
Advertisements that you put out to?
Yes, yes.
And in those advertisements, how do you bill your business? And at least what we've been hearing, that you're advertising a restaurant.
Yeah.
How do you bill your?
I was just looking at that myself. It says, come enjoy a seven-course dinner, and you get certain price off if you do this. Pair wines with your food, and it talked about some educational things. There's a blending party, come make your own wine in the winery. If that's not talking about, enjoy a steak dinner along with the opportunity to do blending of wines pulled from the barrels. I mean, those are the advertisements.
What title are your advertisements?
Pardon me?
How do you title your advertisements?
How do I advertise?
Yeah.
Newspaper, radio, web-based things?
What do you say? What do you say in the advertisement?
We say, I don't know, I can grab all the advertisements. I guess I need to go look at the advertisement and let you know what they say. Most of them have something to do with food and wine. What is it that I'm going to differentiate to have people come to an event? The event is normally, I normally talk to people about the event of whatever it is, is that it is wine, food, live music, and something fun to do. That's the advertisement. So, those are normally the components of why someone would want to come.
But you're advertising for walk-in traffic, too. Is that correct?
Of course. We have a tasting room. That's how you get people to your daily tasting room. I am authorized, according to my permit, to have 100 people every day that were open. And the hours that were open is Wednesday through Sunday, right? And so, as many people as I can get there, that helps my business, which helps.
Yeah. I guess what I'm fishing for is, you know, if I have a restaurant.
A walk-in business is.
Well, let me finish here. If I have a restaurant, then I'm going to say, you know, I'm some restaurant down in Roseville, and this is what we have on the menu. And so, I guess what I'm wondering is, how in your advertising do you distinguish your business as a primarily winery?
Well, the name is Wise Villa Winery, that could help. And if you want wine, it's Wise Villa Wine. It's not a restaurant that has hundreds of wines and beers and, you know, whatever. It's Wise Villa Winery. And if you want to have something more than just.
Well, I know that, that's what you're saying. I just, what I was asking is, and maybe, you know, it kind of sounds like maybe you're not really looking closely at the advertisements, but at least what we've heard here in the hearing is that you're advertising as a restaurant and not as a winery. But, you know, that's something that maybe we're not going to be able to establish today. You probably need to look at those advertisements.
Yeah, I looked at the sheet just a few minutes ago, which you probably have, and it looked to me like it was a pretty good representation of what I'm trying to do. It does talk about wine and food. So, I think if you look at that, I didn't see a big problem, but if it is, then I'll make sure that the advertising is clearly stated. I mean, I can certainly make that adjustment if it's not clear enough, but it looked like it was clear to me.
Well, you know, I don't know if it is or not because I really haven't seen the advertisements, but, you know, there's some allegations that your advertisements are advertising as a restaurant, and so I don't know.
Do you want me to grab that sheet that Marilyn Jasper put together, and I can show it to you?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. And so, this is your standard advertisement, then?
Permission for one, a three-course steak dinner and wine blending party. Mission of one to a seven-course dinner with wine pairing. During the three-course dinner, you'll create your own custom wine blend that you can purchase and enjoy with your meal. I'm just reading a few of these quotes here. So, it looks like, gee, I'd like to go there. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do, is make the point that that's what I'm supposed to do.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not challenging that. I'm just trying to get a picture of your advertisements, and if this is representative of your advertisements, then that answers the question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
I just, I don't want this turning into a code enforcement issue here. Just to clarify, Jerry, if this gets approved as recommended, all the conditions except 42 still apply. If there is validity to the complaints, code enforcement could pull this permit for violation at any given time from here into eternity, that the operation continues, correct?
Absolutely. And to add to that, since the time that Dr. Lee's minor use permit was approved in 2012, we do now have, as your commission knows, an additional code enforcement officer who is on call 24/7, including the weekends, which is one typically we find the most noise- which is when typically we find the most noise complaints are, are logged. So, we do now even have the capability to respond to an event, um, at the time that the complaint is registered, not, uh, the following Monday. So, that hotline number is available to the public. It is on the county's website. And we encourage people, uh, as the summer season ramps up, to let us know. Um, so, of course, Dr. Lee's minor use permit is subject to the county noise ordinance, uh, as well as all of the other approved conditions.
And so, I guess, should this get approved, I'd like to just request that one, a copy of the conditions of approval get forwarded to code enforcement so that they have them handy. And that we share with the neighbors today, code enforcement's phone number, so that they know exactly how to start an issue if there is one, so that it gets followed through and ball doesn't get dropped and no, and you get follow-through. If that isn't...
I don't offer that now the decision.
No, I'm just saying that should, should we get that far, I would like that, that to go with it.
Oh, well, okay, we'll save that for our, our discussion. Okay, any other questions? For Dr. Lee? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, I'm sorry ma'am, you, you...
Excuse me, I have to refute what Dr. Lee said. He, no, please, give me thirty seconds.
Okay.
Because my integrity was impugned by his statement. He...
Okay, I don't, I don't wanna get it in...
No, he explained to me, he has no, I, he has detailed records about every event going on at his winery. He stated that before you. When, I have a video that indicates exactly opposite of that. And I can show that to you. He tells me he does not know anything about that and I'm making it up. I could've gotten it off YouTube, no. I got it from his front yard of the winery.
Okay, okay. A, a lot of it, what I hear, the back and forth and stuff, is, uh, he said, she said...
I have video proof. That's not he said, she said, sir. I have video proof. And he indicated that he has no idea that this occurred and I got it off of some unknown place. That is not true, sir. And this goes on and on. And if you look at his website, he's got more events planned. And that is in direct opposition of what he proposed.
Okay, you've, you've had your thirty seconds. I, I appreciate it, but it's something I can't refute. Okay, yeah, I, I close.
I'm, I'm, I'd like to speak for Grover for a second, please, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Um, just to review the, the conditions of permit, okay? And this is something that, that I think we've gotten caught up in some semantics concerning restaurant, et cetera. Um, but his permit actually allows him to operate seven days a week, okay? So, any dispute about the hours that he operates, he is operating within the hours. He's only operating four days a week, not seven, okay? His permit actually allows for a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-two events of fifty people or more during the course of the year. So, uh, he is operating within the parameters of that permit, okay? It says that all events shall have an agricultural or food, wine, food educational component. Now, we can debate about what a restaurant is or isn't. Mr. Lee, Dr. Lee, excuse me, um, has stood up here and told you, and I have actually experienced, this is what he does. Call it a restaurant, call it anything you want, it's semantics. What he does is he offers wine and education to pair that food with wine. This is within the parameters of the permit. Some other conditions do deal with, with the noise, non-amplified music. And it also states, as Mr. Moss alluded, um, he has to comply with all of the regulations of the county codes. All the sound regulations, ordinances, you name it, he has to be in compliance. Unfortunately, we have had no complaints to code enforcement. Unfortunately, that means that without those complaints being documented, there is no verification of how and what took place. That's why we have code enforcement. Over a two-year period of time, it would've been very simple to pick up that phone and make that call. Regardless of the time of day, they have a recording if you can't talk to someone, okay? Now, as Sherry indicated, they have someone that's on call to deal with these things. So, as much as, as we have heard complaints, we have no official complaints. We have no documentation of those complaints. What we have, very simply, is an applicant who is operating within the parameters of the permit that you issued. And that's what we're here to establish today. So, I'm, I'm hoping that you, we see through the smokescreen here. Dr. Lee has done everything he can to do everything he said he was going to do two years ago. He said it to you, he said it to the board of supervisors. There was no hiding the fact that he planned on preparing food and selling food with wine, okay? It was part of what he proposed two years ago. That's exactly what he's doing today. So, I hope that we can put to the rest this concept of what a restaurant is. What this is, is Dr. Lee's vision to do exactly what he said he was gonna do two years ago. He has done it for two years. There have been no complaints filed. There is no got documentation of any violation of this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. I'm gonna close it off to the public, bring it back for discussion, yeah.
When the staff received, if they received, I'm assuming they received a letter of complaint, how would they typically treat that? Would they look at it and say, uh, we'll treat this as a complaint, hand it over to enforcement? And have them go out and verify it? Or how, how would, how, and how did it get handled, I guess, is the bottom line?
You want me to take that? I mean, typically if we get a letter, I mean, we would, we would contact those folks and have them file a formal complaint with code enforcement. That would be the typical protocol. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm interested in getting a copy of the letter that, uh, you know, this lady sent in just to, to, you know, see when it came in, uh, what kind of response it is. Thank you. Uh, May, May tenth, two thousand and fourteen, so, you know, that's well over a year ago. I don't know what the status of this was, I'm not sure where it went. We can look into that. Uh, but, you know, the first time I'm seeing it, that doesn't mean it wasn't sent in. Uh, but we, you know, we can look at it. But typically, I mean, to answer your question, if we get a letter, it's not a formal complaint, uh, you know, we'll look at it for its validity and then, uh, you know, respond to the writer and let him know what the protocol is.
Thank you.
And i- i- if I could, there's, you know, there's been a lot of questions about, you know, you know, whether this is a restaurant or not a restaurant. Uh, clearly, you know, when the board of supervisors approved this, they looked at the food and wine pairing as a, a legitimate use for this site, uh, you know, whether, whatever you call it as a restaurant. But, you know, for you, the planning commission, the zoning code is, is very specific on what a restaurant is. And I'm gonna, I'll read just a section out of here for you, or a couple of sections. But the definition of a restaurant is a restaurant bar, other establishments selling prepared foods and drinks on premise, for on-premise consumption. Uh, and then it goes on to talk about other, uh, things that are allowed as part of that. But one thing that it does say, it says includes wine tasting rooms not on wine, winery premises. Which basically saying if, you know, if it's not on, if it's not on a winery premise, it would, it would be considered a restaurant. So, this doesn't necessarily meet the definition of a restaurant. Even though it, you know, looks, smells like, acts like a restaurant, it wouldn't meet that definition. Uh, it further goes on to say, uh, that restaurants operate as subordinate services, service facilities within other establishments are not included here in this definition as well. Uh, so I think the way, you know, staff would look at it from a, from a zoning, a land use standpoint, is, you know, this is a, a subordinate use to the primary use on the property, which is a winery. And that's consistent with the direction that the board took on this.
I'm just sort of following up on that. I know we had a big discussion, you know, on commercial kitchens and everything. So, basically, it's set up as a, has to be a restaurant set up, no matter what they're doing, if they're preparing any kind of food. In looking at the information, I personally noticed that they, they have wine, you know, and the bottle of wine on the side and stuff, on all their, you know, on all their information. I guess if I were doing it, I would've probably said, instead of a seven, three to seven-course meal with wine pairing, I would've said wine pairing with a great three to seven-course meal. But that's neither here nor there. And really, I guess the question between, you know, before us today is, do we eliminate condition forty-two? Or do we extend it, or, you know?
Over the permit, whether it's four days a week or seven days a week. And, uh, we've heard both sides. Is it seven days is the outcome?
Right, currently he is operating just the four days a week. But if you refer to his, uh, approved condition number two, um, his approval did allow for seven-day-a-week operation from ten a.m. to eight p.m., as Mr. Farina described. So, he's operating underneath the allowed limits. But his permit does allow seven-day-a-week operation, as it stands currently.
I guess I'm, uh, struggling with this because obviously the intent behind wineries, which I'm very supportive of because it promotes agriculture in Plaster County, the intent, I think, that we as a commission had, and certainly the board had, is really to help promote agriculture. That's the primary purpose behind this. But it, it, it's getting blurred in this case as to whether is this agriculture or is this a, uh, commercial business being operated in an agricultural area? Uh, and I, you know, which is driving? Is the wine driving or the restaurant driving? I mean, it seems to be a little bit of confusion about that, and that's what I'm struggling with.
I, I could say I agree with it for the size of the property and all the vineyards and stuff. I mean, it's, it's definitely, when you bring in the closer view, I guess you could bring in the, the immediate view of the property and stuff, it, it looks like a winery. So, I, I guess I don't struggle with that part as much as if it was on a, you know, four or five-acre parcel and they had, you know, a quarter acre of grapes and said they're operating sort of in the same manner. And so, I, I would have to say that would probably be the, the primary, just from, from the overview of it.
Well, most wineries that I've been in, they do have something that they serve. But I would call it more light hors d'oeuvres, you know, more cheese or crackers or something lighter uh, than actually having white tables, you know, with white table linens on it where you, and us boys and other people running around to...
You know, this issue is, uh, particularly came up in Amador County with, uh, a winery down there. And they struggled for years. And we've been to that winery several times. And, uh, they frequently have, uh, meals primarily for wine club people. But they, uh, offer it where you can come in off the street too. And, you know, people quite frequently, there'll be four or five people, they'll buy a bottle of wine and they'll have, they'll have a prepared meal at the winery. In fact, in El Dorado County, they have similar situations. And so, it's, what's happening here is really not that far out of what, uh, the business of producing wine and selling wine is doing. Food is the natural with wine. So, I, I agree with that, that premise. And so, you know, I guess personally, uh, on this account, I really don't have a problem with what they're doing. I wanted to check into a few of the issues, like the difference between a restaurant and, uh, what's going on here. But it clearly seems like wine is a predominant factor. I mean, you're going to a winery. And so, uh, for me, I've not seen a problem with it.
Any other discussion?
I guess my only comment would be that in future advertising, it may be well to encourage the wine over the food as a, as the predominant issue for going there. And, and hopefully not have people, you know, using up roadway to just go get lunch at a winery, going there because they're a wine connoisseur and they wanna do, have the matchup. Uh, and so, I, I guess I'm not necessarily saying we should make it a condition, but we should encourage the committee to emphasize the wine over the food, maybe a little bit if you could.
Rich, you look like you've...
Well, I, um, I asked one question and it was answered. And, um, I had opportunity to look at the website on my smartphone here briefly, and it looks like a restaurant. It's yours, there's wines all over the place, and that's fine. I mean, I'm happy. And I drink wine with my food at home. But in my opinion, again, only my opinion, it succeeded what we were talking about last year, year before, and, and all the subsequent discussions about event centers or whatever. Uh, the different, the winery ordinance and everything. It's great, he's, he's got wine on there and he's pairing it with all this different food. But if you look at the website, his website, it, it's a restaurant. Every, every item has wine with it, so I'm not gonna say it's not paired with something, but, um, it's a restaurant. And he answered my question, I could walk in there, it's not an event center. It's not for groups to come in. Anybody can come in and have lunch with wine, or without wine, I guess. So, I really think it's in violation... Wait a second, you had your chance twice already and I'm getting a little upset. Just sit down.
Oh, wait, Rich, Dr. Lee, we closed it off.
Again, it's said, it's my opinion. And so, my opinion is I don't think he's operating within the guidelines set by the supervisor, by us, and by our own ordinances. Again, it's my opinion. I don't think, it's, it's, it's being, it's, it's the old slippery salt, that's overused. But it could happen here, it can happen almost anywhere. If you're gonna put a bunch of food with something, it's not gonna be a winery anymore. It's gonna be mainly a restaurant. Anyway, that's my comments.
Well, you know, I guess we're back to code enforcement issue. And I think what you're talking about is if he's operating outside of his use permit, then that is a code enforcement issue. So, it would be in the past, it would be in the future too.
Well, and then it's with what EJ read to us, you know, for what they can do. I mean, he's working with, within it as long as he's got the wines there. And then I do go back to when you look at the operation and stuff, you're, you're not gonna have that much acreage of, of grapes and, and then have a wine processing and everything on-site and not, you know, run something other than a winery, you know? Does sound like it's paired together, at least when I look at it. And also, when, I'm, I'm thinking, if I was just gonna go to, to lunch, I'm not gonna drive all the way out there just to go to lunch, that, that far out versus staying, you know, close to where I work or whatever. But, that's neither here nor there. But anyway, I get back to the thing, if he, if he had just that one little strip of, of wine grapes in, in between the facilities, I'd, I'd probably question it more as to what he's doing. And for the size of the property and stuff, it's, at least my opinion is, versus yours, Rich. It's a winery.
Just a procedural question of staff. Since this was approved by the board of supervisors as well, is this gonna go on to the board of supervisors for this removal of this condition?
No, not unless, uh, an appeal is filed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess I would make the motion then that we, uh, go along with the approval of the, uh, modification of, uh, or dropping of, uh, condition of the forty-two. And recognize that there's no changes in the CEQ findings. And, uh, this is...
A minor use permit modification.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Have a motion second, roll call?
Mr. Severson? Mr. Gray, uh, is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
No.
Mr. Ricucci?
No.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. If anybody wants to appeal this, they have ten calendar days and the appeal fee is five-hundred-forty-six dollars. Thank you, and with that...
Chairman, yeah, what I would recommend at this point, since this one, one item went on a little long, uh, maybe take up the consent agenda, just in case there's people here in the audience for that. Uh, and if we can take care of that, uh, maybe just a real quick recess while the applicant, I think they have some presentation boards they wanna set up real quick, and then we can get to the M-15 item.
Okay, well, let's see. We'll, we'll go ahead and take that up, do it real quick. This would be the Illyn Residential Care Home Extension of Time Minor Use Permit. Is there anyone in the public that would like to?
Or the commission.
Or a commission, take it off the consent calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion to?
A move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick five-minute break and come back.
We've been going down.
Second? Have a motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes. When the economy fell apart in 2008, all construction stopped. At that time, SunCal filed for bankruptcy. They lost the property to the lender, which at the time was Lehman Brothers, who also filed bankruptcy. Not surprising, given the economy. Then in 2012, Lehman Brothers or Lehman Holdings, they were able to secure the property back. They have since brought on local entity, West Park Communities. They're reviewing the project approvals, you know, to see what changes would be necessary to make Bigford Ranch a viable project in today's market. So with that, I want to get into what is being proposed. And for the most, there's a lot of changes with the project, but for the most part, there's three major changes that have occurred. One is they're eliminating the golf course. That includes the driving range and the golf course maintenance facility as well. That accounted for about 316 acres of the project site, majority of which is all going into, you know, the open space areas. The second change was to eliminate, or to make changes to land use. They wanted to eliminate the 9.7-acre commercial site, which was right up in this area. And then, the reason for that is because this project, in today's market, doesn't have any ability to support such use. They also are looking at eliminating the 17-acre high-density residential site that was known as a village residential site. The third change they're looking at is to access to the property. They want to shift the access to the property north. If you remember, the original access was right up here along Sierra College Boulevard, across from Caperton Court. It's kind of an interesting entrance to the project. There's some steep topography there. They were gonna have to build a bridge. There were some safety issues because it's coming downhill from Sierra College Boulevard. So what they've done is they've relocated that from this area all the way up to, along the straightaway, along Sierra College Boulevard there. Much, much safer, better site distance, does better for this project. School Ranch Road is another new road that's being proposed. That's here. This runs by the school site and the school park site. That is replacing what was previously the Lower Ranch Road in the original plan, which was right in this general area. What this slide shows is a conceptual lotting plan. So you'll want to know that the originally approved 1,890 residential units would remain unchanged with the current proposal, which we'll call the 2014 proposal. There would be a slight increase in the active adult housing from 947 to 950 units, just three more units. With the elimination of the high-density residential, there would be a shift to more low and resident, low and medium-density residential uses on the project site. The rural residential uses, which are on a lot of the perimeter of the site, kind of along in these areas, and some of the ridges, those would, those would be retained. As far as density on the site, it would increase from 2.47 units per acre to 2.699 units. That's kind of a marginal increase. However, the overall project density of .98 units per acre would remain the same. There would be two recreation centers. There'd be one for the active adult folks down in this area. I think that site's about eight acres. It would accommodate about 20,000 square foot structure. And then, there's also a recreation center up in the eastern end of the site that would be available to all of the residents of the, of the community. About the same size, and probably would have about the same size structure up there So this is an interesting exhibit that kind of shows the development footprint of the previous project and the proposed project. If you look at the bright yellow area and the purple area, those are areas that would have been previously disturbed with a 2004 project. With the new proposal, all the areas in purple, the project would be contracted back, I guess, is a good way to say. So these areas would no longer be disturbed. That accounts for, I think it was around 293 acres. The dark green areas are areas that will, where the project would be expanded. And acreage there, it looks like it was about 28 acres. There's these two ridges out in this area, and then also up closer to Sierra College Boulevard. Those areas were not approved in the 2004 plan, however, the 2004 EIR did address impacts related to those, you know, those lots on those ridges. So as far, as for open space along the property, there'd be over 1,000 acres of open space, roughly 55% of the entire planned area. 781 acres would be in an open space preserve, and this is primarily the light green areas that you see around the entire project site. Those would be protected under a conservation easement. There'd be 163 acres of open space transition area. What that is, if you can see these faint lines around the residential development, it actually provides a buffer upwards of 150 feet that would be a buffer between the back of the residential lots and the actual open space that is under the conservation easement. And then, there's also about 123 acres of open space parkway. These are landscaped areas along roadways, and the open space corridors between the residential developments and the, and the trails. As for park sites, there would be over 50 acres of improved parkland. The general plan requirement is, calls out for just a little over 20 acres. So they meet the general plan requirement. This is about, I think, 10 acres less than what was originally proposed. The Bigford Ranch Park, which is the primary park site, that would include sports fields, tennis courts, and basketball courts, and that's roughly about 27 acres. There's also a school ranch park, which would be next to the school site, and they would have sports fields as well on that site. And I would not anticipate that getting built till later, probably when the school comes along. And then, for the remaining parks, a lot of park acreage was shifted to the internal developments or clustered residential areas, all these little dark areas you see. There's about 15 acres total, and those would be kind of privately maintained, community parks for those neighborhoods. The fire station that was originally proposed is still proposed, and it's in the same location. There's, the only difference there is the site has been expanded from, I think, one acre to 1.4 acres. There's also an equestrian staging area and a parking lot area just north of the fire station, and that was part of the previous proposal as well. Back to the school site. One change here is this is now in the Loomis Unified School District, so I'm not sure what the plans are as far as whether it's a K through 8 or a middle school, but that site has been reserved for that purpose. And then, there's a couple water facilities. One on the eastern end of the project site. This is for a PCWA facility. I think that's just over three acres. And then, a new site for a water, water storage tank and pump station down on this parcel across from Sierra College Boulevard. That's about three acres as well. This is the trails and bikeway plans. This project has quite an extensive trail system, even more so than the previous project. There's gonna be a 13-mile multipurpose trail. That's the green line that you see that comes around the entire project site. That's gonna be for multi-use, so it's pedestrians, equestrians, off-road cyclists. They are proposing a trailhead up at the eastern end of the site, and they're gonna have some onsite parking spaces, so people can utilize that to access the trail from that part of the project. There are a number of Class 1, Class 2 bike trails along the roadways. I think there's about 14 miles each of both, both of those bikeways. This is a tentative phasing plan right now. When they come in, what they're looking at is this as part of the Phase 1, which includes a little over 1,000 residential units. And it would also include this water facility down on this area south of Sierra College Boulevard. The trail system, what they're talking about is providing for each phase, making sure that there's a loop trail, so you can actually go around the entire site, and then as each phase would develop, they would continue to do the same thing, so you don't have any open-ended trail. So that concludes the overview of the project. We have the applicant, and their representative, John Tollman, and George Phillips here. They'll probably want to come up and kind of add to what I indicated, and if I missed anything, hopefully they'll, they'll bring that up. But before I do that, I want to get into where we're at in the process. Right now, we are going through the environmental review process. We've brought on analytical environmental scientists, the EIR consultant. They're gonna be reviewing the proposed changes to determine consistency with the previously certified EIR and addendum. They'll be preparing an environmental checklist to see if there's any change in impacts or mitigation measures, and then making an environmental determination as to what that document would be, whether it's an addendum to the previous EIR, or supplemental or subsequent EIR. County staff, what we're doing right now is we continue to review the draft specific plan documents. There's the specific plan, development standards, and design guidelines, and those are pretty well fine-tuned. We're just getting to the last bit of changes on those. The applicant also submitted a large lot and small lot tentative map, and we are getting close to completing our review of those maps. There's a development agreement that was submitted to the county. Most of our discussions right now are regarding that. That will take a little bit more time. And then, what just got underway was the fiscal impact analysis and public infrastructure and facilities financing plan. So once those become available, we'll be reviewing those as well. Let's see, we, we've taken this project to several MACs. We went to the Penrin MAC before they merged with the Horseshoe Bar MAC, presented to them, and then we went to the combined MAC twice. We also went to the Newcastle-Over MAC and the Rural Lincoln MAC to provide information about this project, and those meetings occurred over the last year. So the next step, obviously, we gotta get through reviewing all the documents. We have to have an environmental document completed. Once that is done, we will go back to the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Municipal Advisory Council for, as an action item, so they can make a recommendation to the commission and board on this project. Then after that, I hope to come back to you for your consideration, and right now, it's looking late summer. If we can get earlier than that, we'll do that. That's what I'm guessing right now. After that, of course, the board of supervisors hearing. So that concludes my report. Probably turn over to the applicant now, just to add to the presentation, then we'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you, EJ. Okay, at this time, the applicant, I see George coming up. Chairman Doyle, members of the commission, George Phillips here this afternoon on behalf of, this morning, on behalf of the Bigford team. John Tollman was here. He had to leave, his son was having surgery a little later today, so he had to head down to Sacramento. But our, the rest of our development team is here, and we actually outnumber the public. So rather than go through that long list, I won't introduce everyone. EJ did a great job of laying out where we are today with, with the amendments that we proposed. Just a little more background on some of those pieces. As was indicated, there's a long trail to get here today because of the impacts of the economy and the previous owners who tried to develop the project. We had a forensic job ahead of us when we first, when we got re-involved with this, and Lehman brought in West Park to manage in early 2013 of really trying to determine what, in fact, happened on the site, what had been constructed, which issues had been implemented completely, which were left unresolved, and that took quite a while. And at the same time, both Lehman and West Park then engaged some market analysts to take a look at the project as previously designed. Was it really hitting the spot necessary for the market? And that led to the modifications that EJ mentioned, which was the elimination of the golf course, the multifamily site and the commercial site. We're not proposing a winery here. So those, those land use modifications were made, were made early on to, again, we think, better reflect the market. The next thing is, that EJ mentioned was modification, modifying the access points, and he mentioned eliminating the one access point that was closer to 12 Bridges Drive. And as he also mentioned, there were two significant reasons. One was cost, a lot of topography there that was gonna be a very dramatic entrance, which at the time, in 2004, was the reason. It was gonna be a very dramatic entrance, but it's very, going to be very costly. The second point, which is really the important one, was that they were really looking at it with fresh eyes. It had very poor sightlines from a safety perspective of having a signalized intersection, coming around that bend just past English Colony, and having to encounter a traffic signal. So if cars were backed up, that was going to be an unsafe condition. So what we did is, we moved that primary access point down, down to the, the flat area closer to 193, opposite Penny Lane off of Sierra College Boulevard, where the sightlines are actually the best of, of the property. So we don't have situation, a safety situation now, where cars are going to be, have compared, or impaired, rather, visibility. So those were the primary reasons there. Also, I want to emphasize that, as, as EJ mentioned, the trail system is still in place. There will be a conservation easement over the entire open space area within the project, which still comprises about 49% of the site, will be in permanent open space. We've also revised the approach to the tree preservation and mitigation. We have gone in a different direction that the commission will be familiar with, with more recent Granite Bay projects that you reviewed over the last few years, where we're analyzing it from the perspective of tree canopy, oak canopy, and how best to preserve that versus looking at individual trees. So we have a combination of preservation of oak canopy on site, the fact that we're retaining more oak canopy today with a reduced footprint, and then, there's a significant tree component where we will still have a compensatory side to this, and there will be a tree mitigation or an impact fee paid at each building permit. So we've, we've modified that a little bit, that's looking more at the, we're seeing the forest for the, instead of the trees, which is an approach I think, we think is very significant. Just quickly on the settlement that occurred, so you have a little more background there. EJ mentioned who the petitioners were in that action. There was a cash settlement with Loomis, where a contribution was made to the town. They intended to make road improvements with, with those monies. The other environmental organizations, there was also, there was an agreement with the county and those organizations where monies would be paid, and they have been paid, for land preservation, and eight properties were acquired with that money through Placer Legacy, and that are now managed with Placer Land Trust. That totaled about 1,700 acres. The focus was oak woodlands in terms of preservation. So with all that has occurred, in spite of the forensics where we're deciding what, what's actually occurred on site, we think there's, this is a significant improvement on the property. The grading has been reduced to more, it's a, it's a more sensitive approach to the existing topography. We've taken into account the same visual impact concerns that were a concern the first time around. We've obviously increased the amount of open space, as I mentioned, that was there, than was there previously. We think the access points are better. So we think that this is an approved project, and essentially, when we come back to you for your recommendation to the board, it's really gonna be weighing that fact. Have we improved the project? Because we have an approved project that could move forward today and be constructed, we actually think this is an improvement. So which do you, as decision-makers, prefer? And so that would be the question that is posed to you when we come back, hopefully late summer, early fall, for a recommendation. So with, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have of us.
Yep, Larry, go ahead.
Well, I just, I'm curious, is the removal of the golf course one of the conditions of the settlement?
No, it was not.
That was just done, yeah?
Interestingly, it was one of the recommendations of the, some of the environmental groups at the time, and, and they, they made the point of saying, you know, if you eliminated the golf course, you have, the open space is just, is an equal amenity. And this time around, the market research said they were right. So that, I mean, people now are really looking for trails, outdoor spaces, and, and open spaces to enjoy, and as we know, there's, there's more golf courses in the immediate vicinity, and there's not the demand.
I just came back from Sun River for a week, and I, the trail system and the golf courses are just such a huge hit. It was hard to understand how you could give up something that was such a vital part of the community, but if, if it's been determined that you have plenty of golf courses beside that, I guess that would be a fair trade.
Yeah.
Would it, is it possible that if conditions changed and there was a increased demand for the golf course, could it be, is there a place to install it?
There real, there wouldn't be this time around. The acreage that has been modified, well, I shouldn't say that, anything's possible, but I don't think, certainly its configuration wouldn't be the same, but I don't see that being in the future here.
It's not gonna be easy to rearrange again, huh?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I noticed that there's really one way in and one way out, and you have about 2,000 residences on that, one way in, one way out. And so I guess, what I'm kind of questioning in terms of the environmental report that you're working on, or the analysis you're working on, have you involved some people that deal with public safety issues and how those issues might come to play in the regard of this area?
We have in terms of, from two perspectives. One, just being traffic analysis, how does that line up this time around? As, as EJ mentioned, AES has been brought on to look at the environmental impacts of the 2004 project compared to the 2014. Part of that was a traffic analysis. The traffic from being generated by the project has actually been reduced with this version. We do have one less access point, to your point. There's two access points off of Sierra College, and that's it. But from a safety perspective, we have three emergency vehicle access points. One is still over in the area of Caperton Court where the main access was going to be. And then, Clark Tunnel Road, both, on both ends, on, on the south and, south end over here, and on the north end, are going to be maintained as emergency vehicle access points. So from a public safety perspective, emergency service providers can get through those access points, and if for some reason, if the access was blocked off of Sierra College, we can also evacuate people that way. So if, if that responds to your question.
Well, I'm just thinking that, I'd like the roads, the Clark Tunnel Road now is just a dirt gravel road, and so is there gonna be some improvement? Well, I'm just, I don't want to get into all the details of what it would take, but is, is there gonna be some improvements to those roads as emergency access points?
Not significantly, I don't blame it. Paid? Paid, yes.
Not?
It will be paved.
It'll be paved?
Will be paved.
Okay.
On the north side is gravel. On the south side, Clark Tunnel's paved all the way up to the property itself.
Okay.
And as, one of the actions, to clarify the Clark Tunnel issue, the board of supervisors in 2004 made a decision on whether or not to require access via Clark Tunnel Road. And so, they analyzed keeping both ends of Clark Tunnel open, closing the, the north and leaving the south open, closing the south and leaving the north open, or closing both. And the decision of the board was to close both ends and retain them as emergency vehicle access points only.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, a lot of time's gone by since that decision, so it might be worthy of reevaluating it. Plus, I guess from a fire perspective, where you have your open space, which is really on the sides of the canyon, that, you know, it might be worthwhile to have somebody from a wildfire perspective to take a look at how this, how this would come to play in your subdivision.
We have had conversations with CAL FIRE.
Have you?
We can make sure we have another conversation to assure ourselves that they're satisfied with how they can serve the, the site, so we can have, we can have that conversation.
Yeah, that's, those are kind of some concerns, from my background, that I would be watching pretty carefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll give the general public an opportunity to comment, if there's anybody out there from the general public.
Could it be really only me? All right. I'm Robyn Trimble. I'm the CEO of the Rockland Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here today on behalf of the Rockland Chamber Board of Directors. They have heard this proposal, and I wanted to let you know that they do support this proposal and the changes to the Bigford Ranch plan. The chamber believes these changers, changes are positive for the plan and the, the surrounding communities, including Rockland. We think these changes recognize the different market that exists today, and as you know, we have our own golf course that is struggling right now, so we understand that leaving the golf course out makes a lot of sense to this market. We also see the existence of the trails and other amenities, not only to benefit the project, but also to the surrounding communities, including Rockland. So thank you for your time, and we do support the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come up and give us your name and comments.
Good morning, Chairman Denial, and respected commission. My name's Doyle Radford Jr., Labor's Local 185, and I'm here as well to speak in favor of this project. Bigford Ranch, we see this as a way to bring lots of local construction jobs back to our area, and it will also create some opportunities to get some of our youth into the construction field where they can build sustainable careers and, and create working-class family jobs. My brother and I, Sean, we are descendants from an old pioneer farm family. Some of you guys, your descendants grew up with, and we hold this county near and dear. And many moons ago, like I said, our family settled into here. They were farm families, and it was projects similar to this one that created opportunities for my brother, cousin, and I to get into construction. for my brother, cousin and I to get into construction field and able to make us productive members of society where we can afford to make our house payments, and we built careers of this. And so we see this as a good thing, and there's many farm kids. Not everyone goes to college, and this will create some opportunities for them. As a member of the community, lastly, I'd like to touch on, the updates to the plan are pretty darn impressive. Over half the project is going to be open space. I'm a golfer, that's a lie, I'm a hack, but I enjoy to get out there and throw my clubs around. I'd like to see the course personally, but they're being reasonable. It's, you know, in Roosevelt, our, our green fees are down, they're, they're slowly climbing back up, but they were, they had the ear of the community and, and they, they listened, and they created more open space. And like I said, I was actually pretty shocked when I looked through the plans and saw, I think, 55% EJ was saying is open space. So lastly, just the, the conservation measures they're taking on the water, that's something that more projects need to take into consideration with today's drought conditions. So we're excited to get back to work on this project. We were a part of it when the downturn hit, and we definitely need these jobs back in our community. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, come on up and state your name.
Gordon Med, Superintendent, Loomis Union School District. We're not unified. We don't send all our money to the high school, but we have a great relationship with Del Oro. I'm just here for a couple of reasons. First of all, as a school district, we support the development. We are encouraged by any time we bring more kids to our, our community. Obviously, as you know, Loomis is not a community that has tremendous amounts of residential properties going up, so young families don't really have a place to move into our community. So from that sense, we're excited to see a development that will bring young families to our school district. We've been meeting with representatives from the project. There's still some work to be done. It's not completed, but we continue to look forward to meet with them and just discussing today with Aldo what our future meeting topics will be. So a couple of issues just that, that we'll be working out is location and size of the school. If we could go back to the map, please, EJ? Perfect. One of the challenges is, is that we're looking at, and we'll, we'll work through this. I've been involved, I was in Dry Creek School District for 20 years. Well, Kelvin Lee, I know some of you up there are very familiar with Kelvin, when Kelvin built our district to be one of the best in California, and he did it with great development agreements and working closely with communities. And so I'm a, I'm a mentee of Kelvin, and I'm very fortunate to have his background in, in that. But we have to look at things like the main entrance. I think we talked about the, the main entrance having a lot of traffic going through there, which is also a location of school and park. And so we want to make sure that we have boundaries and backgrounds. We have the park there that we would use jointly with the school, hopefully. We've met with the county parks department as well on, on those kinds of things for the future. But if you notice, the park actually comes right out onto Sierra College, which is going to be an extremely busy place for kids and balls and those kinds of things. So we'll have to make sure that all the pieces are in place there. And really, it's, it's, it comes down to size of, of lot for, we're a K-8 school district. All of our schools are K-8, so we require a little bit larger lot size than, say, a K-5 or K-6 school. We do require park adjacent, or we require land enough for us to, to build facilities for our upper grade students to have athletic programs and, and physical education. But we know all these things will be dealt with. I'll end with, I, I support personally the project. We look forward to working with them. There's work still to be done, but we're very encouraged by the folks they have at the table and their openness to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak? Seeing no one, thank you so much for all of your time. And let's see, with, with that, I guess that's it. Thank you so much. Yeah.